Everyone, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 7:01 on April 20th. Uh, let's go ahead and begin my opening prayer. Please bow your heads with me, please. Dear me Father, Lord, thank you so much for being with us, Lord, and being within our city. Lord, help us continue to have the wisdom and the courage to fight, uh, this pandemic and to overcome the silent enemy. Lord, please be with our businesses and our people and let them realize how blessed of a town we are and then how great of community that we're a part of. Lord, please give us the strength and the knowledge to continue. Let us do everything for you, Father, that you may have favor upon our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, justy, and justice for all. Thank you, Matt Weber. Thank you so much. Okay. Roll call vote, please Tammy.
Here.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Knockin.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Wayman.
Here.
Thank you, Tammy. Now, before we begin, um, I'd like to establish a couple of guidelines. Is the Facebook Live running? Basically for public participation. We're trying to mirror our normal city council meetings as much as possible during this time. The person working the laptop and stream will not be able to write down and hold questions for later discussion and keep up with every comment that may or may not be in question. Therefore, just like a normal city council meetings, the ordinance or resolution will be read. City council will then have as much time as needed to discuss that said ordinance or resolution. Once they are done speaking, I will open the floor up for public input or participation on that ordinance or resolution only. We will give everyone plenty of time to submit your question or comment via Facebook Live. If you wish to type a question to be asked, just like regular meetings, you also need to state your full name and address. Please be patient with us as we read these questions or comments and get feedback from the city council if need be. So our first item of business is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Motion for approval.
Second.
I got a motion from Kevin, a second from Damon. Sounded like to me, uh, Tammy, for the approval of minutes from last meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please Tammy.
Long.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Knockin.
Yes.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next item is, I need a motion to read ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Motion over. Go ahead.
I got a motion from Doug, a second by Damon, is what I'm hearing, so please forgive me if I missed you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, please Tammy.
Yes.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Knockin. Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yeah.
Wayman.
What'd you say, Ron?
Nice.
Use your phone.
Okay. Uh, Ron, what was your answer to the resolutions and ordinance by title only?
Yes.
Are they separating?
Yeah, we are now.
Doug's walking.
Here.
Does that sound better? Okay. Alright, next item of business is our city council old business. Uh, ordinance number nine of 2020, please Tammy. Do I have any action on this one from anyone? Seeing none, anyone from the public have anything on this they'd like to mention? Okay, on ordinance number nine of 2020, anyone from the public have anything they'd like to say on this one? Go ahead, me one. Okay, seeing there is none, um, I'm gonna move on to the next ordinance unless someone says not to. Okay. Tammy, ordinance number 10 of 2020.
Number 10 of 2020, an ordinance of the city of Cabot, Arkansas, amending ordinance number one dash 1963 to change the annual payment received from telephone clients for use of public rights support ways, second reading.
Anything from the council, any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, public, any discussion on ordinance number 10 of 2020? Remember, if you have a question or a comment, remember, put your name and address and then state your, uh, question. Okay, we'll move forward. Um, if no one has any further action? Seeing none, ordinance number 11 of 2020, please Tammy.
Number 11 of 2020, an ordinance amending ordinance number four dash 1978 to change the franchise fee assessed from $2 per meter to 4.25% of the gross annual revenues collected and for other purposes, second reading.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone have anything they want to comment? Community, Facebook Live users? Community, once again, ordinance number 11 of 2020. Is there anything you'd like to discuss on this? Any questions, comments? Ordinance number 11 of 2020. We see no one typing, so we're gonna move to the next item. Next item is because it's on old business, because we voted on this last time, I think the vote was eight zero, but for some reason Tammy couldn't hear the motion or a second. It could've been, because I didn't ask for it, but, uh, we've got it on here again. Uh, resolution number 13 of 2020.
Resolution of the 13 of 2020, a resolution in support of a mural project, Cabot Foundation for Arts and Culture and for other purposes.
I need a motion and a second to get a vote.
I'll make a motion.
James Reed has a motion.
A second.
Norma has a second for resolution number 13 of 2020. Any discussion?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead Doug.
Yes, um, I, I voted for this last time. We've had some discussions with some, uh, people of the community, and here's, here's my thought. If you wanna build in Cabot, you get a permit, you gotta meet certain requirements. If you wanna rezone in Cabot, you gotta meet certain requirements. If you wanna put a fence up in Cabot, that fence has certain requirements.
No, it doesn't.
Well, yeah, it's, there's a, there's a height.
It doesn't have to have a permit, though.
Well, right, but, but there are requirements for a fence. I mean, as simple as a fence. Um, as I understand it, these murals are gonna come in front of the city council, and the city council is gonna approve or disapprove. And it's gonna be solely based on our personal preference or, uh, it's, it's, no guidelines other than what we have, uh, what, what we personally think. Um, for that reason, uh, I, I don't, I don't like doing this without some sort of guidelines. And, uh, uh, I, I'm not gonna be able to support this without having some guideline and a reason in front of me why I support or don't support. But I don't think my personal preferences should be, uh, what, what, what I'm, what I'm making my decision on is. There's, there should be, there should be guidelines, uh, e- even if they're small ones, there should be guidelines that, uh, that I and everyone should have to follow and look at when we're deciding whether these murals are, are appropriate.
Mayor.
Yes.
I may be wrong, but I thought the only reason these were coming before is because they're on, on city buildings.
Yes, that's correct.
They all have to come before us.
No.
If it's on a private, they don't come before us. Only if it's on a city building, we're giving permission to use a city building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Permitting what it looks like.
Right. And then we're also gonna have a contract. We're also gonna have a contract with the people, and if they don't do the con, the way that we want to do them, we won't have the mural, but there has to be a contract between us and the other group, just like there will be with, uh, Unity Health that we approved last month as well. There has to be a contract written.
Right.
Before we let them proceed on our building.
But if it, if it's before, if it's on a private building, then we're not gonna see anything at all.
That's correct. Unless we come up with some code, ordinance, et cetera.
But we're not really approving the sketch, we're just, the painting itself. We're just approving the contract to put a paint, a painting on a public building.
What you're approving is that they can put that painting. I'm not gonna do a bait and switch, it's the painting with the first word, welcome to Cabot.
I see, okay.
Already approved, we didn't have a motion and a second. That's the only reason it's coming before you is that we have to get a motion second, which we did, now we have to have a vote.
So, I mean, if we're not, if, Doug, if we're not gonna do every build, every single one, we'll be writing guidelines for ones we're not gonna be approving?
No, we would write guidelines for any mural that goes on a public building. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pretend to, uh, even have the authority to, to tell folks that they can put on their own property. This is city property.
I see, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yes. And, uh, I'm not gonna get into it, I've had complaints about the ones we've got out there already. Okay? And, uh, in my opinion, guides, guidelines would, uh, uh, would give us a, a ground to stand on if, if there was, uh, uh, if there was a complaint or somebody had a problem. And you've also gotta figure, we have eight council members right now. And, and, uh, in, at the end of this year, we could have, in, in reality, we could have eight new council members, all, uh, all now have the, uh, the responsibility of determining what murals they like, which ones they don't. They could have completely different tastes, wants, uh, judging criteria. There is no consistency in determining what should and shouldn't be on public buildings when it's left up solely to individual, uh, thoughts. There should be, I think there should be something in front of us where everybody in the city council can say, no, it's just not what's in my head, it's what's on this paper here. There has to be guidelines, just like there is for other things that go on in the city.
I see, I, I understand now, I understand.
So what complaints have you had about the other murals, Doug?
Well, um, they don't like the content of some, and I'm not, I'm not gonna go into them here, they're already up, but, uh...
But I, I think we should, this is the part for it. What, what, what are they not liking in the content?
Um, they've, there was a, a couple out there, you know, on the, on the back wall of that parking lot, of the municipal parking lot, that had some, uh, um, symbols on there that, uh, people didn't like.
What symbols?
Well, one of, a couple of them were those rainbows.
What's wrong with the rainbow?
Well, they, uh, uh, at least one of them, and it was pointed out to me, held right in front of me, said, uh, that's a, a gay pride rainbow. And, uh, he said he, you know, this, actually, there were two guys there, said he didn't have a, a problem, you know, with that, uh, that ideology or that group, he said, but if you allow that up there, then you've gotta allow, uh, you know, Satan and everything else up there, and he's right.
So, but this is for all the public, are we saying we're gonna exclude one group or another?
Well, um, if, if I were to write guidelines, I would say guidelines that didn't, uh, that didn't, uh, represent any, any, any groups, it would, they would be, um, you know, and this, this is where the turning would come in, but, uh, I, I would, I would say that on public property, we don't need, um, you know, political and ideological symbols on it, should be something that is, uh, generic to, to Cabot or however you wanna read it, but, you know, if, if the council wants to press on, then, then that's, that's up to them. I just think we're, uh, we're opening ourselves up to getting, uh, in, in an array of things out there that, uh, uh, some people may like and some people may not, whereas if we had guidelines that said, uh, no, and I don't even know the right words to use, but we could, we could prevent that and just have, uh, all, like, like generic gay Cabot, uh, kinda murals, but whatever, whatever the council wants.
So besides these so-called gay symbols, what other symbols are up there? I mean, I'm just learning here, what else, what else is up there?
I couldn't get my mute to come back off.
Oh, what other, what other symbols besides these so-called gay symbols were up there?
Well, there was a, and, and the guy I was talking to didn't tell me, I mean, I wasn't out there, and, uh, he saw it, and he said that, uh, he thought he saw, and, uh, I, I can't remember what he called it, but a little, a little figure of, of something out there that, uh, and I, I, I'm not even gonna pretend to remember what it was, but, uh, he took it as, uh, not, not belonging on public property. And I'm, I'm not gonna get into the, the, the language and the content, I'm just gonna say that, uh, he and a few others were not happy with it, but that's, I'm talking maybe 10 people.
Okay, I, I guess I'm just confused. I've looked at that wall, and I think it's very nice for the students and people that are painting it, and, um, and right now, rainbow means hope, is all I know, is hope out there for this quarantine to be over. Um, hope for good things to come.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you, okay? And that, uh, that rainbow was up there long before this happened. I'm just relaying like I'm supposed to do as an elected official representing the people, I'm relaying thoughts of the people that, uh, come to me.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, can I interject?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to see us not lock things down so that we can't embrace diversity in our community. That's one of the things that we are lacking is diversity. If you talk to young people now, one of the things that they say we're short of here is a diversity to all kinds of people, uh, not just, uh, not just a rainbow effect, but I'm talking about other cultures, and I'd like to see us include more diversity, because that's what our communities are made up of.
Oh, I agree totally, and we have that in our community now, a bunch of diverse cultures and people from different backgrounds and different environments, and, you know, I don't wanna exclude one group or another, I mean, that's not what a city does, it embraces everyone. Um, and I don't, I guess I don't see anything wrong with what's on the wall right now. Um, I was very proud of the artists that did what they did, and that ugly little wall is kinda cool now, and, you know, I thank CFAC for their hard work of putting that in there and getting that done, because, you know, no one else did it. I mean, they worked hard to get that done, so I applaud them for what they did, and it looks a whole lot better than it did, and I've got the businesses right there that want their whole back wall, their business is painted now. They wanna be part of the art wall. So, uh, I think it's done a lot of good for the community. So I, I just, I, I just wanna know what he had to say, 'cause I was kinda confused. So, thanks for entertaining me.
Well, and, and I, I think this, this one that we're looking at now, i- is completely Cabot.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean...
Agree.
So I, I, I mean, I, I'm, whether we, whether we go ahead with guidelines or not, I agree with James, we need, Cabot needs diversity. Um, but this one that, this, this particular resolution is completely Cabot. It's, um, it's a beautiful, I think...
Yeah, I think it's gonna look really good and make that ugly wall look a whole lot better, and they're gonna string lights up, and it'll be a nice place to go, uh, when we get back to being unquarantined. So, uh, you know, I, I think great things are yet to come for Cabot.
Mayor, I'd like to see something from the VFW and from maybe Little Rock Air Force Base, you know, we need to include all the facets of our city, so diversity is what I'm interested in seeing.
I agree, I agree. And that may be some more research that CFAC or another group will do for us, to let us know kinda all the groups that's out there and how we give something for everybody. Agreed. Any other discussion?
When we, when we vote on this, it's happened, um, with it being part of the process, are we funding that by any chance?
No, sir.
Okay, cool.
Nope, nope. We may provide some water, you know, our water or something to spray off or a use of a pressure washer, but we're not paying any money.
Cool, thanks, that's good.
So who is, who is paying?
CFAC's paying for it. Just like Unity Health's paying for theirs. So, unless I'm wrong, Amy, is the chamber paying for y'all's or is, uh, Unity Health?
Uh, Unity Health is fully funding, uh, the one that you guys approved last month, and then this one is, I'm guessing funded by AMP.
So...
I think this one is funded by AMP, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, is it, is it Norma?
Yes, I think it is.
It should be one of the three commissioned murals that was approved.
Okay. It's coming from CFAC, which has got their money from AMP, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And we'll give Unity Health water too, so they'll get plenty of water and pressure washer, whatever they need.
And, uh, the chamber will probably pay for the, um, difference in paint, it's not gonna be much to where, you know, save against graffiti, graffiti, I mean, that's worth it to me.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please Tammy. Hey, wait a minute, before we vote, audience, do you have anything to add? I missed it, I'm sorry. Audience, resolution number 13 of 2020, anything that you'd like to state before we go to a vote? Okay. They're saying some, we're in for a little bit, out for a little bit, in for a little bit, out for a little bit. Facebook's trying to keep up. Is everybody in right now? Okay, everybody that's watching out there in Facebook land, resolution number 13 of 2020 is about a mural being painted on the fire department, old fire department wall downtown, uh, by arts and, by the Cabot Arts and Culture. Y'all have any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, roll call vote, please Tammy.
Weber.
Yes.
Wayman.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Warner.
With a caveat that I'm not voting against the mural, I'm just vote, I'm gonna vote no for my previous, previously stated reasons.
Davis.
Yes.
Knockin.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Passes seven one. Okay, city council new business, ordinance number 12 of 2020.
Ordinance number 12 of 2020, an ordinance to amend article four zoning code of the Unified Development Code, annotated 4.2.3 yard size and area requirements and for other purposes, first reading.
Laura, I know you wanted some action on this.
Um, this particular one, I'm good with letting it, um, continue on unless, um, the council feels fit that these next few codes, um, we can put into place immediately. There's a specific one that I would like to, um, it's, it's not this specific one that I would ask for the second and third reading to be waived in the emergency clause, but, um, this one's fine to just continue on.
Okay, okay. Anybody, uh, okay with that for the first reading? You want to, um, any other action? Looks like everybody's shaking their head yes. Okay, audience, uh, ordinance number 12 of 2020, any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, ordinance number 13 to 2020, please Tammy.
An ordinance to amend article four zoning code of the Unified Development, annotated 4.9 special provisions and for other purposes, first reading.
Okay, Laura, anything on this one?
Yes, um, I, this is the one about the accessory buildings that I would ask for the second and third readings to be waived, as well as the emergency clause to be enacted. Um, we've had quite a few residents wanting to get accessory buildings, um, that don't currently fit within the current guidelines, but this little bit of extra that we've added and the easiness to apply for an accessory building lets them now fit within the regulations. And since now people are at home, they're cleaning their house out, they're doing yard work, they're wanting to get these accessory buildings installed into their backyard, so, um, especially since last week, um, a lot of people got their stimulus checks, they're wanting to go to Home Depot, they're wanting to purchase an accessory building or do something extra in their yard, and why wouldn't we want to get the money back in tax dollars for our city? So that's why I'm asking for the second, third readings to be waived and the emergency clause to be enacted on this specific ordinance.
Basically, public health and welfare of the citizens to get them out to...
Absolutely.
Um, going crazy, going nuts, and trying to replenish some of our revenue we're losing from, uh, our restaurants and parks and rec, et cetera.
Yeah, 'cause residents are going to Home Depot and to our local hardware stores, so we want them to go to Witt Davis and the Home Depot to put the tax dollars back into the city so that we, you know, we, like you said, we can recoup some of this money that we've happened to lose.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. Uh, yes, yes.
I got a question for Laura.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Ron.
On the lots one acre or more, I got a question for you. If you got a ten acre piece of property in the city of Cabot, and so if you're just gonna use it for you to shop, to work in, how big a shop can you build on that?
Your maximum that you would be able to have is 5% of your total, your total area. When you get over, let me get over there to, if you look at the chart, the chart's a lot friendlier chart to be able to read versus the previous one that we have. So, when you have over an acre, when you get to the maximum size, it's gonna be 5% of your total lot area.
So it'd be a half an acre on 10 acres, right?
Pretty much is what if you want to have a shop that big.
It's 20,000 square feet.
So you wouldn't, I mean, if you just had a, a thousand square foot, how much you could build, build that 5,000 square foot? All right, that's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, in the approach for, uh, waiving a second and third readings, I can understand. Can we separate her request out for, uh, emergency clause? When we do the voting on that?
Yes, of course you can.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, James, we can do that. We may have to, uh, we'll have to motion to amend the ordinance title to include the emergency clause as I see it here.
Correct.
Yep.
So I will go ahead, if the council's ready, I'll go ahead and motion to waive the second, third reading.
No, second.
I've got a motion from Kevin, a second from James, waive the second and third reading of ordinance 13 to 2020. Any further discussion? All right, audience, ordinance 13 to 2020. Any discussion on that, uh, code section?
Talking about discussion on this actually on the ordinance, we talking about discussion on waiving the second.
Either or.
Phil Robinson called Shannon, no way. I like what you're saying, if you want to waive a lot of the requirements, putting an accessory building on the residential lots, is that correct?
Correct.
And the reasoning for that, I heard Laura said that we're doing that, uh, to recoup money due to the current situation.
No, we're, we're saying that's a good reason to do that. No, I agreed with her and yes, Laura said that. Yes.
So these buildings that we're putting, if we're going to do this, we're going to put buildings on lots. And I don't, I didn't have an opportunity to see what the wording was, but if we're going to put buildings on people's residential lots, those buildings are going to be permanent structures on a building. And we're answering the temporary situation with a permanent situation. I don't think that's right.
What do you mean we're amper, we're answering a temporary situation with a permanent situation? That doesn't make sense.
Well, this is what I'm saying.
I have.
If we put buildings on a lot, those buildings become permanent. Are you with me so far?
Yeah, I'm with you.
The situation that we're in now, COVID-19 is not a permanent situation, it's a temporary situation. So we're answering, according to what Laura said, in order to recoup some of the money from COVID-19. We are answering that by saying, okay, we can waive the permanent solution.
No, what Laura's saying is these people are home filled because they can't go to work. And so now's the time they're going to do their outbuilding. So why not go ahead and do this now so they can do it? That's what Laura's saying. We can wait three months, let all this go through. So, so what's the problem? So what's the problem with doing this? What's the problem with doing this?
The problem with doing anything that has permanent, waive things that you're waiving based on current codes that we have that ensure that the outbuildings we have look good in the neighborhood, that look good on residential lots. We're talking about size requirements, we just heard Ron talk about the size, uh, that's allowed on a huge building. Be allowed to be very max and probably anything good. So now in a residential apartment, it's 1700 square foot of house on a big lot. You can have 1700 square foot house with 5,000 foot structure.
Now, let me, let me, I, I do want to correct myself when Ron asked what he asked. If, if you have over half an acre lot, so if you have a 10 acre lot, you can have a max of 5% of the lot area or the max of 3,500 square feet. Not just 5% of the lot.
Max is what?
The maximum the building can be is 3,500 square feet. So.
Do they still have to comply with all the, it's got to look nice or can they do a little shack shed like Phil's thinking?
No, it's still, it's still has, it's still supposed to match the exterior color scheme of your home. Um, you still have to submit to get an application. You still have to show me a plot plan on where it's going to be located. You still have to do 95% of the requirements that we still have. But the reason I'm asking for this to move forward is so that residents that are currently at home that are wanting to get out and do things, they can have the opportunity right now while they're at home versus when this, when they have to go back to work and they don't have the time to do it. Everyone has the time right now.
Of what you're saying, the potential.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Sure, Matt.
Uh, I couldn't make out everything that was being, uh, asked out in the audience. Um, it sounded like something to the effect of this was being pushed through because of the current situation because of the COVID.
Yes.
I, I, I don't know one way or the other, but my guess is that these amendments to the UDC were in the process of being drafted before this really went rampant with the pandemic.
Correct.
And they were already in the pipeline, just like the other, uh, amendments were. I, I don't know that for a fact, I'm guessing. But because of the certain circumstances right now, it would be advantageous for us to go ahead and push this particular ordinance through. And as you stated, uh, previously about lost revenues to the city, it might fall under the category of health and welfare of the citizens. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. That's correct. We've been getting a lot of calls to the city, you know, we're trying to run a city for 30,000 people.
So I'm just, again, want to make sure I have it straight. So these amendments, whether they went through planning commission, uh, went to the municipal, uh, services committee. This isn't something that was, uh, put together in the last couple of weeks.
No, I think I mentioned it.
Correct.
I think I mentioned it to Ed back in February and he wanted it all to go back forward to planning before it came to council.
So it's been vetted fairly well.
Correct. And all these codes did go through planning commission prior to them being brought to you. And these codes, like you said, they don't get written overnight. So these have been in the works for a little while.
I'm not, I'm not for or against what, whatever was said in the audience. Like I said, I couldn't hear it very well, but I got the gist of it. But I just want to make sure that, rest assured, whoever it was that was speaking, um, asking the question that put them to rest that this wasn't something a plot by night thrown together.
No, sir, this is not something we just threw on here.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can also say something, please?
Sure.
It's also Laura, it's also going to be up to the homeowner to make sure they're in a subdivision that they comply to their bill of assurance. Because the bill of assurance states civil matter, nothing to.
Correct, correct. The city does not, we do not enforce any bill of assurance or anything like that. No.
Correct. So if they put something incorrect in their subdivision, then the property owners of the subdivision would take them to court.
Yes.
Yeah, technically they're supposed to come get a permit first so that we can let them know that they comply with city regulations. And normally at that same time, we, we let them know that if you do have a bill of assurance, that you do need to check to make sure that you're adhering to that as well.
Okay.
Mayor, could I forward one question to Laura?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ms. Nobles. Uh, are most of subdivisions, we have lot sizes less than one acre that are in developed neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see this as an ordinance that was going to reflect, uh, or impact neighborhoods. It's going to be larger homeowners that would like to have a building for a motor home or something like that.
Right. Because your typical lot size in your ordinary subdivisions are 75 feet wide by 120 to 135 feet deep. So there, those lots range from a quarter to half an acre, you know, typically. Your normal subdivision doesn't typically have over half acre lots or bigger.
I think the only area we might have is Candlewood in that area maybe.
Yeah, these people are trying, going to spend $20,000 or more, you know, they're going to spend, they're going to spend five digits. I mean, it's going to be nice.
So Laura, we, the, the, um, the portion that said, um, so many, I forgot exactly how it was worded, but the, um, percentage of the heated and cooled space of the home was taken out. Is that correct? I think in the old ordinance, it said something about you, it could be, the accessory building could be this amount of square footage, but it couldn't exceed, um, so many square footage of the heated and cooled of, of the, um, home.
I'm not. I don't, I don't remember it stating on that in the previous code. I'd have to pull that up to.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong. I, I could be wrong. So I didn't see it in this one, but, but that's okay because I mean, it goes by the lot size, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're just making it plain and simple. The previous code, you have to look at so many different options and it was extremely confusing. This is cut and dry, either you're zero to half an acre or half an acre or bigger.
I agree. It is. It stops people from putting additional storage buildings because they didn't have one big enough.
Well, now in this one, it's going to be a combined total square footage.
Okay.
So technically, if you have two smaller, um, accessory buildings, the total square footage can exceed a certain amount.
Okay. Okay, that's fine too. Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Any other public comment from Facebook? All right, seeing none, uh, Tammy, roll call vote for the, we have a motion to waive the second and third, a second. Okay, uh, please, please do the vote, please, to waive.
Warner.
Sure, yes.
Vivin.
Yes.
Knockan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Lainey.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gee Davis? Okay, that was the last one. I'm sorry. I was going to make sure to get any comments, somebody was commenting on something. Um, motion passed, next. We okay?
Okay. We're not doing. I got a motion, we got a motion to adopt 13 to 20.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Got a motion to adopt ordinance 13 to 20. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Kevin, a second from Norma. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the public? On ordinance 13 to 2020. We don't have anything. Okay, uh, roll call vote please, Tammy.
Warner.
Yes.
Vivin.
Yes.
Knockan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Lainey.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes. Okay, I will motion to amend, uh, ordinance 13 to 2020's title to include the emergency clause.
Second.
Got a motion from Kevin, a second from David to amend ordinance number 13 of 2020 to include the emergency clause. Discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like some clarification. If it passes, it automatically becomes law in 30 days.
Uh huh.
No. It's immediate law.
All right. If it doesn't, if, if, if the ordinance passes the way it is, without emergency, it's automatic law in 30 days.
That's right.
If she's, if, if the municipal services issues a permit and it's completed, it won't be completed in less than 30 days. Why do we need the emergency clause? I'm fine with the second and third reading, but I have trouble seeing why we need the emergency clause.
Are we allowed to issue a permit without the emergency clause before 30 days?
Uh, not as, not on this ordinance. It would have to be on the old regular, it would have to be our current regulation. And a per, a permit doesn't take 30 days. You can apply for a permit and we have you an answer within 24 hours.
I can attest to that.
And Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, uh, two things. One, I'm probably going to switch to Ron's computer here in a little bit because my mind's about dead here. But, uh, I think what Laura's saying here is if this, this law, if this ordinance doesn't go into effect, any persons that are applied or applied for, uh, within the next 30 days would fall under the old ordinance. So by passing this emergency clause now, it would go into effect now. And anyone who applied for that permit, uh, would fall under this law of basically effective when we end this meeting.
I agree. That's the way I understand it.
Mayor, I, I have a technicality question.
Okay.
Um, and it's not that I'm against the emergency clause, but we've already voted to waive the second and third. We've already voted to adopt the ordinance. How can we go back and ask to amend the name of the ordinance if we've already passed it? Am I?
I'm amending.
Am I out of line on that?
I'm amending the title to include the emergency clause. That way we can motion to adopt and attach the emergency clause. That way it goes into effect as the vote is done.
I'm, I'm just, it, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. It's not, I, I didn't know if we needed to amend the, the title of it before we voted to adopt it.
I, I thought. Good technical question. Uh, Ben, could you respond to that, please, sir?
Yes, and I think that Kevin is right in this case. I think that admitting the title can be done at this point under statute. The emergency clause is bifurcated. In other words, it's, it's two separate processes. So I think we, I think if the council wishes, it can go ahead and amend at this point. Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I just wanted, I didn't want it to come back and bite us.
No, that's a good question, Matt. Good question. Good question. That's why we're all here. So.
Sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
No, you're good. So Kevin's motion does stand. Any further discussion? Okay. Audience. We're still on ordinance number 13 to 2020. Any que, any question about the mercy clause? Okay. Give me a few seconds. Somebody from Belgium's watching, just to let y'all know. We have nothing. Uh, Tammy, roll call vote please.
Warner.
Yes.
Vivin.
Yes.
Knockan.
Yes.
Reed.
No.
Weber. Weber? Weber? Weber?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Davis?
One more time, Kevin.
Davis?
He's saying yes. Shake your head if you, yeah, now I heard him. Seven one. Okay, next item, ordinance-
I'm sorry, that was to amend the legislation to include the emergency clause. Now they have to vote to-
Motion, motion to adopt emergency clause.
Okay, motion to adopt emergency clause by Doug.
Second.
Second by Ron. Further discussion? Seen none. Roll call vote, please Tammy.
Warner?
Yes.
Vivin?
Yes.
Nocan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes, might as well.
Weber?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Davis?
He said yes. Yes. Passed eight zero. Okay, now I can go to the next item?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, Tammy. Next item, ordinance number fourteen to two thousand twenty.
Number fourteen and twenty twenty, an ordinance to amend Article Five Subdivision and Development Code and the Unified Development Code, annotated five point five point one, require public improvements and for other purposes, first reading.
Laura?
Yeah, this one is strictly for street signs. It's just, um, we're wanting to change this to have more of a consistency with our street signs and stop signs. That way the font is the same, the color's the same, the size is the same. We've ironically had issues with the wrong sizes being ordered, so this would put it to where the, the city purchases, the street signs and the mounting brackets and everything, that we only would invoice the developer for the, um, street sign name and the mounting bracket. We would install them and everything. So we can make this a streamlined process for developers and we can have this up for safety reasons and not have any delay on why they're not installed on time.
Okay. I know as a mayor, when I came to office sixteen months ago, uh, we had a subdivision. We were having a lot of problems with the signs, and, uh, the developer was buying the ones that weren't in code regulation. He got frustrated and was like, why don't you just buy the signs? Uh, why do I have to deal with this? This is city signs. Why are you, why are you putting this on me? There's always something. Um, from what we gather, this could be a little bit easier on the developer, that they just pay the fee for the signs. Uh, I don't think there's an upcharge or anything, is there Laura?
No, it, it's just right what we're invoicing.
What we're getting them for. And, uh, it just makes it where everything's in line and looks right. So, you know, I guess she wants to waive the second and third so we can begin this with all of our subdivisions that we have going on at this time.
Who's gonna do them for us? I mean, where are we gonna do it? What department?
The street department. As far as install the signs or-
No, making, making them.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, we're not getting in the sign making business. We're gonna purchase them from the same company that we've already been purchasing from. Here again, that way they're the same font, the same color, the correct size.
Okay, so we're not making them ourselves?
No, we're not get, we're not getting in the street name.
We're not getting a sign making business?
No, no, we're not.
We, we had a street sign making machine, but I think Bill did something with it.
Yeah. Think so.
And Mayor, this is not unusual. Other cities around us are making signs, are control of the signs, and that would be small melt.
Yeah, I've been to a lot of different cities and come do it, but you know, right now it wouldn't make sense because you know, you take two or three people and I'm paying them a salary of twenty-five, thirty thousand each. At sixty thousand dollars, I can make, I can buy signs a whole lot cheaper.
Agreed.
Right now, it just doesn't make sense. But, uh, I wish we had it though. I wish we had it, James, cause it'd be so much easier to replace a sign quickly, but, uh, it's just not cost effective.
And we have a good turnaround time with, with who we currently use, so that's, that's not been an issue so far.
But if we could find a cheap machine, I would like to buy it though. So one day you may see that, but I'd like to have it, to have it, to do it if we could. I think we could get our money back out of the machine using our own people, uh, cause we have a lot of talented people over in the street department that are very smart. So, um, if I could find one cheap, we'd get one, but they're pretty expensive.
Yeah. So Laura, you don't need the emergency clause on this one, do you?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So what are you wanting again, Laura? Just the second and third?
Just the second and third, fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm motioning second and third.
I'll, I'll second that.
We got a motion from Norma, a second from James to waive the second and third reading of ordinance number fourteen to two thousand twenty. Any further discussion? Do we have an audience discussion from Facebook? It's about, uh, the signs. I'm looking to Matthew. Bear with me. Sir? Okay. We think everyone's waiting for chicken, so they're ready. Nobody. Okay, no one had any discussion on that. Anyone else have anything else before we, uh, take a vote on waiving the second and third? Seen none. Roll call vote, please Tammy.
Long?
Yes.
Davis?
He might be off.
Skip over him and go to the next one. He looks a little frozen there.
Warner?
Yes.
Vivin?
Yes.
Nocan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Davis, are you there?
Kevin, you back?
He's completely gone, I think.
Well, he just popped up again, but here it goes.
Okay, I'll be waving yes.
He said yes.
Yes, for Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, eight zero. We need a, uh, action to adopt the ordinance.
Motion to-
Don't move.
We got a motion from Norma, second by Ed to adopt the ordinance number fourteen to two thousand twenty. Any further discussion? Any on Facebook? You got anything? Okay, roll call vote, please Tammy.
Long?
Yes.
Davis?
Keeps popping in and out.
Warner?
Yes.
Vivin?
Yes.
Nocan?
Yes.
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin just said yes. Passed as eight zero. Okay, next item, ordinance number fifteen to two thousand twenty.
Number fifteen to two thousand twenty, an ordinance to amend Article Six, annotated six point one, defined by the Unified Development Code and for other purposes, first reading.
Laura, you need anything on this?
A second and third would be good as well.
Can you explain it for everybody?
It's just more, just a technical, um, definition for lot coverage. Um, it's more defined to just show the intent versus the definition.
Okay.
Lot coverage has previously been misconstrued, um, misunderstood, so this just clarifies exactly what the lot coverage entails.
Okay.
Hey, Laura?
Yes, sir.
Um, I didn't mark it here, but, um, is, isn't lot coverage, uh, covered in one of these, uh, previous, um, that we've passed? So if we, if we don't, uh, allow this definition change, that would affect something we've already passed?
Technically, yes. Yes. So this one, so yes, this one would have to sit just like the other one, so no second and third on this one.
Any action, any motion to waive the second and third?
So Laura, you're not needing?
No, we'll just move this one to the second reading so it can stay in line with the first, um,
Okay.
previous ordinance twelve of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
Okay, I was confused. I thought it's still in there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now we can move forward to resolution fifteen to two thousand twenty. Please Tammy.
Number fifteen to two thousand twenty, a resolution in support of postponing the public interest in the city of direction.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
So a motion by Kevin, second by Doug. Any further discussion?
I just, I wanna say this. I, I brought this to Ben. This, uh, state of the city was, uh, in my opinion, it's a very important thing. And, uh, I mean, where we usually do it in the meeting, uh, we had plans, uh, to do it publicly. I think it needs to be done publicly. Not only the idea of doing it in conjunction with something else to bring more people out, I think with resolution, uh, standing for the council, standing behind this, uh, this state, the state of the city is usually done within thirty, uh, I'm sorry, ninety days. This, this stands behind it. There's, it puts everything out in front, uh, transparency and all that, and I think this is a, this is a good thing.
Uh, just to let everybody know, we are in compliance with law. It has to be presented to the council within ninety days, and it was. We just wanted to do something big for the city. Uh, we're gonna cook hot dogs and hamburgers and have some, uh, special guests and some entertainment and, uh, have a town hall afterwards. So, uh, we had to put that off due to COVID nineteen, but, uh, that was for the public, for a public event, uh, gonna be held by the city. But it, uh, you know, this just shows that you support that as well and that you're behind it. Doesn't, uh, say that we've done anything illegal or we're trying to pass the buck down the road. Put you behind me, just like Greg said. I appreciate that, Doug.
Motion to adopt, resolution sixteen.
We already have a motion and a second.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, we were just in discussion. Anyone have anything else? Anybody from the public, Matthew? I guess y'all, y'all out there? Y'all okay out there? Okay, roll call vote, please Tammy.
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Vivin?
Yes.
Nocan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Passed eight zero. Uh, next item is a resolution to support the suspending enforcement of certain sections of the sign code. Uh, we talked about this last time, so we issued that. Um, the only thing is with the senior graduation, um, we don't know when that is yet, and I have told the school administration that I'm behind them in any way that I can to support them. So I know it says June first, I believe, on the resolution. I would just ask y'all to consider, since we're all here together, is maybe moving that to the end of July. Just so, um, I heard Bryant's doing their graduation in July. I'm not saying Cabot's gonna do theirs that late, but sure would like to, to have a resolution on there for the temporary sign ordinance to be waived, so we can have the city decorated in red and white and black and make it look good. So, uh, we're all behind it.
Yeah.
If y'all are okay, that'd be the only change of that resolution that Ben has there, and I guess we just have to...
Do we need, do we need a motion to amend the resolution to change the date?
That's, that's what I would think, but I'm not an attorney. Um, but I believe so. Ben, is that correct? If, if that's all they change of it?
Yeah, is that the only change we're looking at? We could do an emotion, a motion to amend and the change of the date. Yes, sir.
Good.
Mayor, would it, I might, would it be, would it be prudent or okay to, instead of putting a date in there and finding out that that graduation goes past that date, uh, could we, uh, just amend it to say, uh, up to and including, uh, graduation, uh, so that, you know, we don't have to come back and do this again if the graduation is held past whatever date we put in there?
Yeah, or let's say August thirty-first, cause we know they gotta graduate before school starts back.
Well.
How about October, August thirty-first? That way, when the kids come back, they can do signs out, welcome the kids back, trying to get them fired up about school, because it's gonna be, what, pre, eight, five months if they haven't been in school by the time they get back. I'm okay with paying-
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
What, 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 could we not cover that under the tempor, under the, um, sign ordinance with the temporary for two weeks? I mean, you can have them two weeks before and two weeks after? Under current sign ordinance?
Yeah, I guess you can. I just wanted to have y'all behind it. I mean, we could do whatever.
Yeah.
But I was just putting y'all behind it. That's it.
I mean, we, I mean, we all, we can handle the, if, if it goes further than the date we have, we could always handle it. We could, we could still have it and still handle it.
Yeah, you're right, and I already told the school system, whatever, so I'll do-
Yeah, and that way we can handle the coming back to school at thirty-first, since they've been out of school so long, and we could also handle the, um, the graduation, no matter what date it is.
Sure, I, I just wanted to include y'all.
Thank you. But, but if we amend this one, this is all temporary signs, is that correct?
Yeah, but right now with-
It's lot thirty-fourth, it's all temporary signs.
It may take us that long to keep, get back to booming again. I mean-
That's true too, that is true.
You gotta, people get used to going out to eat and going to the movies.
That's true. So this will help everybody to lot thirty-first.
Yeah, in the school.
In the schools.
And really, this, this is all just a formality, because everybody knows that we're gonna do everything we can to help the school and, and to help the economy in any ways.
And the businesses also, exactly. That's fine. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to put y'all in, I was getting at.
Thank you. So all, you wanted August thirty-first? I mean, is that, does that make sense or?
I think August, I think August thirty-first. That would, that would take care of graduation.
I'll, I'll make a motion then to amend this ordinance to, uh, what'd you say, August thirty-first?
Yes.
Second.
Resolution or ordinance?
Resolution, my bad, resolution.
Resolution.
Okay. I got a motion and a second, motion from Doug, a second from Norma, I believe, is to amend resolution number sixteen to two thousand twenty for the date to be August thirty-first versus June first. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Anything, Matthew? Bear with me. We see nothing. Uh, so go ahead, roll call vote for the public.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Vivin?
Yes.
Nocan?
Yes.
Okay, passed eight zero. Okay, before we do this next resolution, the only thing I've heard and probably other you have, go ahead.
We got it.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry, I was thinking we do it all.
Make a motion, make a motion, we adopt resolution seventeen.
Second.
I got a motion, Matt, a second, we adopt resolution number sixteen of two thousand twenty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote please Tammy.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, passes eight zero. I'm sorry, I was getting excited about these chickens. This next item is um about the chickens, but I'll tell you what I've heard, I've heard that they like a longer date that was prescribed, and I've also heard that the property owners association wants people to know that property owners association controls, which is correct, um, you know, so I don't know if we want to mention something like that in there as well. But, okay, so that's all I have, uh, before we read this resolution? Or do we want to uh discuss it before we read it, or do we want everybody else has about it?
Uh, I may say something, I think Ed's probably already owned this, but uh, if they sign a property owners association, that's between them and the property owners only, it has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
So uh, yeah, we can pass a resolution for chickens, but the property owners association is totally separate from what we do. Am I, am I right, Ed?
Yeah, no, we're not gonna get into property owner stuff for the bill of assurance or anything like that. We're just gonna remove our regulations off of it for temporary time, and that temporary time right now is through as long as there's a state of emergency declared in Arkansas. Now, we can put an end date on it that's a little bit better, like thirty days after the state of emergency has been lifted. That'll give us time then, if we want to permanently do something with it, we can. I know that I, I know that we already have legislation prepared right now tonight to be able to make this permanent, so it's not gonna be a holdup for us to do anything.
Right, right now, it has June first as the date, which if, you know, uh, A S A ends the uh, May fourth, it's gonna be about thirty, that's where it's at right now, June first.
Yeah, that, and I think that's fine, that'll give us enough time to do what we need to do. I know it's being well receptive, I do know that.
Yes, I was gonna ask uh Mr. Wheeler, if you're listening, do you still have the ordinance in hand for us uh next month in case we do go into this?
Yes, sir, I've got the ordinance, I'll just send it out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
So, so the council's direction from City Hall, what you want me to portray is that this is a resolution that we're doing right now because of COVID nineteen to help out, but we will discuss this in May meeting about a permit.
Making it permanent, right.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have a discussion in May meeting about making it permanent.
Okay.
But I, I'll motion to adopt resolution seventeen if it hasn't been one made yet.
There's a second, Ben? We gotta read it first, Kevin, let me read it.
Okay.
Tammy, resolution seventeen. Okay, Kevin?
Okay, I'll motion to adopt resolution seventeen of uh two thousand twenty.
Second.
Got a second by Damon, a motion by Kevin. Please open up. And I think we have people in the audience that want to talk about chickens, so where's our mic? Okay, all right, y'all ready to hear the audience?
Yes.
Yes.
State your name and your address. To the uh mic, please. The change right now is just, the change is just uh putting council support behind my executive order, who's getting first, to allow the restrictions on chickens. You couldn't have chickens if you had less than an acre lot. That's where it, till June first.
I come from a family, I raised chickens early, or uh, high school, you know, high school raised chickens, and we had hundreds of chickens. And even though we were gonna do this, I don't have a problem with it, but we're gonna have chickens that are not gonna be ready to lay eggs, they're not gonna be ready to butcher months from now, if we get chickens, if we get older chickens already, and we don't put a limit on the numbers, then yards are gonna smell, neighborhoods are gonna smell, if you've ever been around chicken yards, if you've had a bunch of chickens in it, you know what I'm talking about. It's gonna be a difficult situation.
In the, in the order right now does address that, Phil, basically saying that if it's a disturbance or a smell or whatever, we can move them.
And how will that be?
Through animal services. Okay.
Uh, just so the public knows, when we, when we do get into that ordinance, the ordinance is only going to allow four hens. So uh, when we get to that point, uh, we'll have a more of a discussion on it.
So you won't be allowed to get chickens, is what you're saying, Kevin?
No, sir, uh, if, if a new ordinance is passed surpassing the emergency state that we're in, uh, the new ordinance, according to what Mike has, will only allow four hens, period, and they have to be in a cage, and they cannot free range. And it has to be towards the middle of the property.
Yes.
So there is a steep, there is some stringent regulations on that if an ordinance passes, other than that, June first is wiped out.
All right, we're gonna turn it back over to the public. Go ahead.
And the chickens, uh, it kind of concerns me with getting in, so the handful, like here and there and so long, and uh, right now it's time for all the chicks to get feed. And that work, now it's time to get them, also with four H, my kids, two of my kids are in four H, and we get them at a day old, and we have them up until county. County fair, sorry, and we did this for a couple of years, and a couple of years ago, we were told that we could not have them. And of course, it puts a damper on your little ones, especially when she's three, um, but it benefits, it's a benefit for us, it's a benefit for our neighbors, our friends and family, and with those same chickens that are sold at an auction at the fair, and that money goes back into it, so it kind of helps everybody in the whole situation. I did read somewhere, and I'm a hundred percent sure where, but it said two hens per family member, I don't know if it's something in there or something. Where it was, but the chicken. I'm gonna jump away, I should say, because it's changed all over the place. I was read the enforcement through animal control, as I had two visits with them. And just to have these chickens back in the city, if you take care of them and maintain their living quarters, then I don't see why we can't have, I don't understand, we have like a hundred of them, but to have a couple per family member sounds reasonable, maybe, um, on the lines of not letting them out, you know, being free range, as was mentioned. The four H chickens that we did have, they were free range before, um, when I was in town, they didn't know I had chickens, and I had nineteen at the time. They could not sell them, they couldn't, they did not see them, and it was great with the kids being in the pool, they wanted to see this, the chicks, there was no snakes, there was nothing in my backyard. And where I live, it used to be a cow pasture, so that's all that was out there was a cow pasture. So I am in total reverence with this ordinance being removed out of the, have to have one acre, because a lot of lots that are out there for those that can't find a place out in the country, to get one.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We have someone else coming next?
Katie, plenty of things, um, the reason why I'm bringing up chickens as well as one for the kids, seeking to learn and help the feed taken care of. And even though we are in state of emergency right now, there's been a couple of times I've gone to the store and not been able to get any eggs, so. And then how, I understand that, but it's stationary now, that the ground is their own, they're walking in their own feces, as well as they're not gonna be able to maintain any critters or anything on the ground, I don't know, y'all got issues with summer hens, but we have. Um, chickens are great, we should be careful of that, if the chickens wings are flipped, they're really not gonna be leaving the backyard unless you move. So I was wanting to see maybe that be addressed as well, um, and then, you know, maybe at night they need to be, it needs to be that way, but the.
Hang on, hang on one second, hang on one second, are you, are y'all able to hear her?
Not really.
No.
Can you talk into the mic better, I'm sorry, I'm watching their faces, just wanna make sure they hear you.
I'm, I'm not sure what, what all y'all ended up hearing, you know, but.
Can you hear her now?
I can.
Much better, yes.
We could have more than just four hens, um, due to sometimes they go to all day eggs. Um, secondly, in regards to the coop having to be stationary, um, chickens don't do well if you can't get them on like newer ground per se, plus the fact that they'll be staying in their own feces, which is not helping for anyone. To see if uh, we could at least move them around the yard instead of being stationary once asked. If their wings are clipped, they're not gonna go either, so they couldn't really be a nuisance to anyone. Um, and just the fact that what it's done for like the kids that have now been stuck home, it's something that they're able to care for and to be able to see the fruits of their labor. So many positives and negatives for this, I would hope maybe that would give them better address to them.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, very good stuff. We have another one in the audience, we're gonna go to the other team. Uh, now we have Jeffrey from the leader newspaper gonna ask some questions.
You know, state law requires the farm stores to sell chicks and access sits, it wasn't happened to the other two.
Well, I think what Mr. Davis had said is the current ordinance they're talking about bringing up doesn't even address chicks, it goes straight to chickens. So you can't even buy the chick, you're gonna have to go to, I guess, a feed show, not a feed show, a chicken show, and actually buy your chickens that, like you were selling to somebody else, you gotta go buy some chickens, they're, they're saying no chicks for the ordinance they're considering right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, uh, we'll have to get it back into the details of that ordinance particularly. If Michael sent it back to us, because I haven't looked at that ordinance in about five years at least, uh, so we'll have to look at it then and see what it specifically says before we get into that kind of detail. And I suspect it'll be a two-month uh discussion ordinance, am I right, Mike, is that what it was last time, you remember?
Yeah, Kevin, last time, we started with four, um, but due to the statutory law that says you can't sell them in less than six.
Okay.
Use the ordinance to six at that time.
Okay, now, do you remember if it related to chicks, hens, I know it was just hens, there's no roosters.
No roosters allowed, um, but we didn't differentiate between chicks and adult chickens.
Okay, we'll leave it there for right now, if you don't mind, that way we can get back into it.
Okay, we, Rachel, Rachel, Ms. Rachel, just came back to the mic, more questions, go ahead, Ms. Rachel.
One question I do have, and it's probably on everybody's mind that can uh think about it or on Facebook, is what are we supposed to do with the coop that we are in, which is one to two months after we, after all this chaos is taken care of? How are we supposed to handle that, because a lot of people are not essential workers, some are essential workers, so some have a paycheck coming in, some don't, so how do we, I guess, come out on top on this whole thing, if we can only have them up to two months, my first, or you know, December thirty first, whatever the day is that's gonna be chosen?
Mayor, can you repeat that question?
Yes, basically, our question was, how are they supposed to come out on top of this after they bought the chicken coop and the chicks, and the chickens are just now starting to maybe lay eggs? And what are they supposed to do with all this if uh the date changes or goes away, um, and how do they proceed?
Mayor, we can, we can do an extension of it for another couple of months, or six months, or whatever it takes, not to put anybody in any type of bind, to make sure that everything is okay. Uh, this discussion that is going on now is, really needs to be done next month after we get the ordinance out for everybody to look at. You know, and then we can talk about all of the nuts and bolts of it then, but I would not be in favor of just pulling the rug out from under them right then. I mean, if everybody's gonna go out and get some chickens and everything, and then, you know, we're gonna sit down and say, no, you can't have them, and Mike goes out next morning to pick them up, I think that's pretty low. So I wouldn't be in favor of anything like that, we'd be able to do something to make it work, I think.
You're welcome, you're welcome, I mean, we're just, we'll be discussing the ordinance next month in May or May work session, so I mean, it'd be great to have you all back then, since I guess y'all are experienced in chicken uh activities, and uh, that would help, that'd help the council know, kind of from the chicken community of, you know, what, what makes sense and what doesn't, but still, they have to make a decision based on, you know, thirty thousand people, well, your neighbors that aren't gonna have chicks, you know, we, we gotta, they gotta look at both sides of it. So, but you had a lot of great points, good stuff.
Mayor, maybe Ben can correct me if I'm wrong, whether we do a resolution, uh, extend it, or we do an ordinance and make it permanent, um, if they live in a subdivision, have a P O A or a bill of assurance, their neighbors can still take it to civil court if they object to it, um, chickens, is that correct?
If they have a P O A.
Yeah. It's against the bill of assurance or anything like that, yeah.
Right, okay.
So right now, the resolution has June first on it, so if it's gonna take us two months to discuss it before we can bring action, do we wanna adjust it now on the permit deal for another month on top of that, or what?
Why don't we go ahead and extend it the same way we did the signs, was it August thirty first, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and do it till then, that way we're not putting a, a one-month crunch on them.
Okay.
That's in the form of a motion, Kevin, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll motion to amend the resolution to extend to August thirty first.
Okay, so I got a motion from Kevin, a second from Matt Weber, to amend resolution number seventeen of two thousand twenty to move the date from June first to Oc, to, I'm sorry, to August thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? We got another, come on back. This, this date represents the executive ordinance in place. Gives you till August 31st to legally have chickens. Um, Mike, how many chickens can they have?
Well, we don't have anything in Congress where they can have any.
I didn't think we did either.
Right now, you know.
Is there a rule of thumb or?
Well, Mayor, according to the ordinance, they can't have any unless they have a, while you've suspended that part of the ordinance, which there'd be no limit.
Right, so right now there's no limit.
Is there an age limit on them? Can they be chicks or do they have chickens? I understand the no reason, I get that.
There's, there's no age limit, you can have chicks or hens. But I prefer hen laying hens, I mean, egg laying hens, yeah. You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome. I think they have their questions answered, uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote please, yes. Yeah, uh, public, besides the public we had in here, anything from Facebook land? Okay. I thought you already did that buddy, I'm sorry. Yeah. Somebody Elizabeth Cook mentioned on Facebook that chickens when properly cared for are no more trouble than having a neighbor with 15 dogs.
I agree.
Elizabeth Cook, we agree, or Kevin Davis agrees.
I agree.
I don't, I don't know about chickens. I know about dogs and I have two of them.
Mayor, that was evidenced when you said chicken activities.
Chicken activity.
We, we know you're a city boy, sir.
Well, Elizabeth says Francis Street supports this.
Okay, well Francis used to have a cow in the backyard over there too, so. I can see them approving this one.
Jared, Jared Hoag is against it. Uh, 30 Sage Bush, Sage Brush Lane is against it. Okay, any other discussion? Looks like Susan Bennett says she'll support it. Just FYI. Seen other, no other discussion. Uh, the, the motion on the floor is to adopt the amended resolution, is that correct Tammy?
I believe that was just amended.
Okay, this is just to amend. Okay, this is the amend resolution number 17 for the date to go from June 1st to August 31st.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call vote please Tammy?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Bibbins. He said yes.
Yes.
Not Ken?
Yes.
Pass is eight zero, I need a motion to adopt.
So moves.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion from Kevin, a second by Damon to adopt ordinance number 17 of 2020 as amended. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please Tammy?
Yes.
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 Long?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Bibbin?
Yes.
Not Ken?
Yes.
Okay, pass is eight zero. Next item, resolution number 18 of 2020. Yes.
Uh, I may, I may misheard you. Uh, I think you, you, you just called this an ordinance, I just want to make sure everybody knows it was a resolution.
Yes, it's a resolution, yes sir.
Yeah, I, I.
I meant to say the ordinance next meeting that we'll discuss, but yes, it's a resolution.
Okay.
Yep, amended resolution. Let the record show. Uh, resolution number 18 of 2020, please Tammy?
Number 18 of 2020, a resolution in support of the mayor's spending enforcement of certain sections of the city code regarding fees for new business licenses and renewals.
I've only heard positive stuff on this one. Um, no discussion about date changes or anything, they were.
Is the date till June 1st on this one as well? Or was it August 31st?
It's July 31st.
Okay, okay, I'll motion to adopt resolution 18 of 20.
I got a motion from Kevin, a second from James to adopt resolution number 18 of 2020. Any discussions? Any public discussions? Any Facebook discussions? Do you have anything Matthew? Seen none, all in favor, roll call vote please Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Okay, pass is eight zero. Uh, any other new business for anyone? Seen none, moving in the community input. I know I mentioned to y'all about, uh, people have been asking about a curfew, but, uh, I kind of put a poll out there with all y'all and your emails and you separately responded. Um, we kind of got mixed reviews and then talking with the chief of police, um, and others and our, our city attorney. You know, the problem is getting one that has some bite in it. And, um, you know, since the governor now has said May 4th, we're hopefully going back to work everyone. Um, I think we just kind of try to enforce the best we can, the current curfew we have on the ordinance with our miners. And, uh, do the best we can on that. If, if it doesn't bode well and we get extended longer, then, uh, I'll have something ready for y'all on May 4th or whatever our council date is, that would be May, let's see, May 4th, is that right? Council agenda meeting date?
First Monday.
The first Monday, so if that's May 4th, that's when I'd have it ready.
That's May 4th.
Okay, it'd be May 4th, so I don't, I, I haven't, I don't foresee anything, but if we do, I'll have, we'll have something ready to go for you to look at. But, uh, right now we're just gonna continue the course and, um, do what we can. I know there's some troubled spots over off Elm Street, over by the high school, um, over by Walmart. Um, but, uh, you know, we've had those areas, we, we try to run them off when we can and to keep them from congregating. But, uh, as, as all y'all know, with, um, 18 year olds, 16 to 18 year olds and college kids, you're going to have some issues. So, uh, but I don't think it's nearly as bad as other cities are having. So, um, I wish we didn't have any, but we do, we have had some. But, um, I think we just monitor what we have and if it, uh, doesn't improve or gets worse, then we'll have something for you on May 4th. Have to consider.
I may be wrong, but I thought there was already a curfew in this town for people underage anyway.
There is, uh, 10 o'clock, Monday through, Sunday through Thursday, and then amended on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, that's, that's why I didn't really respond to that, I was waiting on us to get in to look at what we already have. But there's not enough time anyway, so I agree with y'all.
Mayor, just for clarification, is this the May 4th workshop meeting?
Yes. Yeah, workshop meeting, yes, you're correct, workshop, work session. Anyone have any other community input?
Uh, I was going to ask Mr. Hooper if, uh, it's probably not for tonight, but if we can go ahead and, uh, probably blow the dust off the suddenly contract. Uh, there have been some issues in the last couple of weeks that, for a fact that we've had issues with those guys. So, uh, we might want to go ahead and enter some discussion, it probably in the work session is started right.
Well, we've already done that Kevin, we've been working on it for about three or four months. Um, we've got a letter, our attorney wrote the company and sent all of our complaints. Uh, I don't know how many there was, but probably 70 to 100.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're supposed to get back with us. Um, the COVID-19 thing slowed it down like it did everything else.
Right.
They sent all that information off before March 15th.
Okay.
Uh, but Ben, if you would, if you'd get with him and see where we're at and see, uh, how we can proceed.
Do we give them a deadline to reply by, Mayor?
Um, I can't remember what the letter said, Matt. Um, I don't have that with me, but there is a letter I can forge y'all or if Ben would tomorrow of what he sent out.
Okay.
We can send you what we gave them.
I will say, I sent the, I sent one of them an email today, this, uh, in Ward 1 area over here off Ritchie area. It's been down for like over a week, the internet.
Right.
And, uh, at this point right now, there's too many, uh, too many college age kids and people working from home. And it, uh, internet has become a necessity, we can't even get, do, do without it hardly anymore. So, uh, it come back on today, so, you know, how long it will, I don't know, so.
Yeah.
And they had one business dead in the water for a few days.
Yeah.
Well, Kevin, I totally agree with you and one of my things to talk about when we do a town hall is somehow figure out how we can joint venture with somebody and use the bond proceeds to start stringing wire for internet for our city to make, uh, the internet faster and better for our citizens. And how we can do that and what the cost would be, because it's getting ridiculous. So I think we have to make an investment through our taxpayers and I think they would favorably like that if we could come up with a good plan. But, uh, that's something we've got to look into and, uh, you know, uh, I've got Ben looking into it and, you know, it, it involves utilities and all kinds of, you know, federal communication stuff. So, uh, we got to see where we fall and all that, but I'm hoping we can partner with somebody and somehow get, get some good internet going in the, in the town.
Yeah.
For the future, because you're right.
I just piggyback on that, what Kevin was just saying, not just, uh, you know, college students. I've got a third grader staying with me that even though Papa is teaching her the right way to do math now, um, having that internet link with the school district, uh, these kids need this in so many ways to stay up on their AMI requirements.
I agree totally. Yeah, we have three kids at the house on internet, so I can't even get on.
So I, I can chime in and say I have, I had to get, I have suddenly downstairs at my house and have central link upstairs at my house because my husband's office is now upstairs and we couldn't, suddenly couldn't provide upstairs what we needed, so I have two internet providers at my home.
You're the first person I've ever heard that.
Yeah.
I've heard it, there's several folks here in town that have that.
Have both?
Yes, because one of the other cannot provide enough.
Yeah.
To run.
Plans that he needs downloaded, they could not provide what they needed.
Okay, I got you, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big thing, we need to consider how many millions we can put into that to, uh, make the town a, a nice hot, hotspot for everyone, because that's, uh, that's what's going to grab the millennials too. I mean, people don't want to come back here if they can't get internet, especially the youth, because that's all they use is that internet. People, that's all the TV they watch, it, they stream.
Exactly.
We have to do something, we have to be forward thinking and, uh, see what we can get done. And I think our citizens will stand behind us. Anyone else? We have one from the audience, go ahead.
Phil Robinson, 12 Chano Way, and I wanted to, uh, start off saying thank you to all of you that worked here and keep the city going. We're in, it's understatement to say though, we're in some weird times right now. And you guys are doing an outstanding job keeping everything rolling, keeping the city going, I appreciate all those efforts. I mean, things like this with the effort to make the council meeting available and to people that can make it and do it better than the last time. And it keeps getting better, I hope that next time, uh, we make all the changes that we need to do this weekend. I hope that we make all the changes or whatever we need to do to make it better. Uh, the first one I missed altogether because the connection to Facebook was middle of the conversation. Tonight I ended up coming here because I couldn't make, make the house, right? Uh, both through my cellular network and through the internet connection. And I emailed my folks Roger or Matthew I was talking to, but emailed back and forth, messaging back, I didn't get it worked. Uh, I showed up here. Now please don't laugh when I'm going to say, following this, distract from that, I really sincerely appreciate the efforts that you all are making to do this. Um, because we were not able to do it last week at all, other than the people that were here and the people that were on Zoom, the council members and other members. Ben gave his input to me, said that was okay, that was legal. I still had questions in my mind, I'm not going to challenge that. And I don't relate them right to challenge. But this time as well, when I got in here, I had no way to make input until I got in here. Had no way to make inputs to the first two or three items on the agenda. Because all I saw was this picture still, the picture was completely still and all I could communicate was back and forth between Roger and Matthew. So that did not work, last time did not work and this time did not work. So I'm asking you, please, please, between now and the next time, should this be required again, to put whatever it takes, the effort, the technology, whatever it takes, to make it to where other people can participate, uh, our community can participate. Uh, just this evening when I was first, I looked at Matthew's face or Matt's face right now, he can barely hear what I'm saying right now. So he, one of the people representing me cannot hear my input, he doesn't know what I'm saying. Uh, and others may be the same up there too. So, so that's my effort and I'll go back to what I said before.
Put the, put the mic closer to your mouth, put the mic closer to your mouth.
I'm right on it.
A little bit closer.
You're right there.
There you go, now they hear you.
Yeah.
Close with the COVID-19, thank you for your support. But anyhow, the, uh, I wanted to again say thank you all very much for the efforts, uh, that you're putting forth to make sure that we keep the community involved. And I can see that tonight, I mean, between the Facebook, Matthew over there texting or putting messages on Facebook for other folks to see, uh, and, and, uh, all the efforts made here to keep the connection made. I thank you for that and hope that you will continue to do that to keep us involved. Thank you very much.
Thanks Phil.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't fail here at the city, Phil, we're winners and we try to take care of everybody and do what we can, okay? We don't fail at the city.
Well, we did last week.
We don't fail, technical difficulty.
Yeah.
Technical difficulty. Anybody else?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I'd like to, uh, publicly, publicly admonish one of my fellow councilmen. I'm deeply, deeply disappointed in Mr. Long and we have not had one puppy shot all night in his camera shot. And with that, I, I, I. Motion to adjourn.
Dog left him.
No, we're not going to adjourn yet. Point of voter, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, you got the floor.
Aw. My sweet puppy. His lo-, his dog left him.
No, she didn't, she'd gone to bed, her bedtime's passed.
Aw, look.
Yeah, I do too. Hope we can get there. All right, anybody else have anything else before we close up? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion from Doug, second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Y'all have a blessed week. Thanks for all you did.
You too, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.[1732.99]